This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, so let's get started here. Okay, I'm gonna call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for December 23rd, 2024 at 6:02 PM. And with that, let us do our usual call to order here, and I think East Hampton Media is with us, so we will start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, now, let's see if we can go through our agenda here. Do we have anybody here for Citizen Speak? Because everybody's on the agenda. Okay. So let's take it away here, I guess, on the agenda. Let me pull up the agenda here, if I can do that at the same time for myself. Uh, so we have an appointment here for Evan Huff for the Conservation Commission. And I gather Evan is with us tonight.
I am, yes.
That's great. All right. So would you like to say a few words about yourself and tell us how you're interested in CONCOM? And how did you get convinced to join the committee?
Yeah, uh, yeah, so I moved to Southampton in 2013. Um, I bought, I bought a house on Mountain View Circle, across where Opa-OPA used to be, and then
Sure.
in 2018, moved up with, to Foma Road with my wife, where we now are raising our four-year-old son. Um, so yeah, I, I've obviously enjoyed Southampton enough to buy two homes here.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, I've been lucky enough to travel quite extensively across North America racing my bike. Um, and somehow always seemed to end up back here. Um, and so, yeah. The, I've always, um, wanted to get involved, much like my, my father was when I lived in Russell. Um, he was on, he was on every board imaginable, it seems, seemed, but, uh, yeah, so have wanted to be more involved with the town. Um, being an outdoor-minded person and, and someone looking to make sure that, um, my son Logan can enjoy the outdoors as much like I do now, um, when he's, the Conservation Commission seemed like a perfect fit for me.
That's great. Wonderful. Nice to, nice to hear that background. That's really good. Okay, so I think, Dan, since you're on the CONCOM, would you mind leading a motion to accept Evan?
Well, thank you for allowing me to do that. I'd like to make the motion to admit Evan Huff to the Conservation Commission. I think he'll make a great addition.
All right, and this will be a three-year term, Evan, uh, to expire June 30th, 2027. All right, so could we have a second? Cindy, all right. Uh, any questions, discussion? If not, all those in favor?
I, I would be supportive of appointing Evan. Um, admitting sounds clinical and wrong, but we're on the same page.
It is an appointment. You're correct. It is an appointment.
English is my first language, I promise.
All right, so all those in favor, please?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. All right, I'm not hearing any nays, so Evan, thank you very much.
You have to do a roll call vote for virtual.
Oh, I do? Oh, because we're in back. Okay, sorry. Roll call, yep, we're, we're on Zoom, so roll call vote, sorry. Cindy?
Palmer, yes.
Okay, Dan?
LaValle, aye.
Okay, Stephen?
Johnson, aye.
Okay, and Fouls, aye. Okay, that's all approved and all official. So Evan, your next step would be just to touch base with the town clerk and get sworn in, uh, before the next CONCOM meeting. And, uh, probably, given the holidays and so forth, you may as well wait until early next week, I think. Okay, that sounds, that sounds great. Thank you for stepping up, we really appreciate it.
Hey, I'm on the Conservation Commission now, Evan. Um, so I'm Dan. Uh, if you have any questions or want to know anything, um, feel free to reach out to me. Um, I'll send you an email. Seriously. You have a point of contact, someone to get to help, get started on that, so.
That'd be great, thank you.
That's great. Yeah, thank you very much. All right. Okay, and you can, you're welcome to stay if you'd like. We're not gonna have a very long meeting, but, uh, you're also welcome to go have dinner or whatever.
Excellent.
All right, so let's, uh, okay, moving on, let's go to some reports. Uh, Scott, Town Administrator's Report.
Uh, actually, would we be able to take the ARPA applications out of order just with the, uh, the tech committee here?
Okay, sure. Yep, that sounds like a plan. I don't have any objection to anybody else. Thanks, yeah, we do have Art Lawrence, Megan Gentile, and Dan LaValle, representing our Ad-Hoc Tech Committee, so sure, yeah, go ahead and pull up what you're needing to talk about. Yeah, it's great to have you guys.
Give me one moment. Um, so in the packet, um, I, there's, there's quite a few items in the, um, for the application for the ARPA IT tech.
Is Scott, sorry, one thing, can, can your volume be any higher? Your volume's a little low for me anyway, I'm not. Is that better for anybody? Okay, all right, go ahead.
Okay, sorry about that, my earbuds are, this is, this is why we need a new laptop too.
There we go.
Uh, so right here, um, we have a, a list of what our current IT, um, thanks to our, our current IT uh, inventory is, and if you can see, there's quite a bit that are either, we're not sure when they were purchased, and some that were purchased almost nine, 10 years ago. Um, so IT capital needs are one of our biggest issues.
Not, not sharing, Scott, sorry.
Oh.
Yeah, you're sharing a general, um, a general page, but not the whole, not what you wanted to, I think.
Is that it?
There you go, yep.
Okay. So right, so this is an inventory, thanks to Art for putting this together, he was actually able to ping all the different, uh, machines on our network. Um, but as you can see, some of our, um, laptops and some of our desktops are pretty old, nine, 10 years old. Uh, so there's not only compatibility issues, but there's also, um, moving forward with, you know, the different windows that are gonna not be supported pretty soon. Uh, so it does require an upgrade. Uh, and Art was kind enough to put together a draft of a capital IT plan moving forward. And IT capital is just one of those weird things that doesn't quite reach the most things, the $5,000 threshold for our traditional capital. Um, but this is something that Art has put together that we're hopefully gonna be using in the next couple of months. Uh, and what it does is really, it just cycles out all the different hardware that we need and keeps track of our software and potential upgrades. Uh, and he's doing just some sample numbers here. Uh, but with the ARPA money, um, did everyone see the Word document?
See a PDF.
Okay, let me just stop here.
So just, just while you're looking for that, so what I'm understanding is you just cycle out a few at a time every year, is that it? Yeah, because I think a lot of these laptops, I'm not sure about desktops, but the laptops were bought during the CARES Act stuff, which goes back at least, you know, pre, or beginning of COVID, so they're certainly close to five years old, if not worse, yeah.
Yep. Uh, so additionally, uh, the ADA request last, uh, board meeting was, uh, $12,500 for, from the ARPA money. Um, turns out there was actually a capital request a little while ago for, uh, pretty much the same exact thing, it was supposed to be, uh, ADA accessible door openers. Um, so that leaves about an $872 difference. Uh, tonight, I'm just requesting the, um, the Select Board to reappropriate, uh, $9,250 for the um, IT ARPA application, and then we also, that leaves us with a little bit of money. And, uh, one of the things that's gonna be coming up, not only for Council on Aging, but also the parks as well, uh, talking to the Parks Commission Chairperson, um, are AEDs and AED accessibility. Um, we only have one in Town Hall. Uh, it does pass, um, does pass inspection, thankfully, but, um, eventually, we're gonna be looking at one specifically for the Council on Aging, which is what this request is. Uh, but with Kate's memo, it's also gonna be, uh, something affordable, AEDs, that we'd be able to take like pickleball and different sporting events for, for the senior center. Uh, and then our, uh, Parks Commission in this year's budget request, uh, is gonna be looking for some permanently installed ones for Conan Park. Um, so just to get it on the table. But this one, we, we have just enough money for, um, the first request from Council on Aging. And, uh, that would leave us, um, with a little bit of money left over, so I would still keep that money, the $1,068, um, to continue with, uh, to be spent for the ADA door operator request, and that would just offset the, um, the capital request.
This is a little bit of a tangent from the IT thing, but is the AED request for parks, is that something that is becoming uh, required by the state, or I guess where does the idea of having like those devices at like parks come from?
I'm, I'm not sure if it's required yet. Um, I just got the, I just talked to their chairperson last week on it, so I'm still sorting through their budget.
Interesting.
But I think it's, I mean, if you look in the news, it's, unfortunately, there's been a lot of incidents with, um, athletes, um,
Oh.
having a cardiac, uh, issue.
Okay. Right. So Scott, in order to, you know, because each of these ARPAs become a separate application, um, so what we're essentially doing is whatever the, the application number was for the ADA doors last meeting, we would actually take a motion, if, if, correct me if I'm wrong, we would take a motion to reduce that $12,500 down to the amount you're asking for. Um, hello, uh,
It'd be, uh, $1,068.
Down to 1,068, so to reduce it down to 1,068. And then a separate project is then the IT capital technology. And yet another separate project is the AED for the Senior Center, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, um.
So we're looking for like three different actions here?
I think so.
Okay.
Right, uh, so we've, we will still have, hang on here, so I'm seeing 114432 as the new request total, and it was a little bit less than, okay, we'll have a little bit left over there too, okay. Okay, so I think we'll take a motion, first of all, let's reduce, um, well, first of all, anybody have any questions? I shouldn't interrupt, yeah, questions about this, and, and just if Art or anybody, you want to talk a little bit more about the replacement strategy there, where you're starting with some of those, by all means.
Just a quick thing, uh, Chris, um, and this is pretty standard throughout the, the real world, the, the industry, certainly the industry that I, that I came from, and, um, we got caught, caught up, uh, pretty bad over the, over the number of years, uh, um, for not doing this, and, uh, ended up with a bunch of junk, basically. Um, this is, I, I think what Scott's got, got going here is, is, is really good, and, and we do a piece at a time, and then this way we stay very current. And we also will be including in this, uh, request, um, some mini PCs that actually can, um, go on the back of the, uh, of a monitor. And, uh, so not only does that give us, uh, some really nice, uh, technology and new technology, but, um, it, it gives additional space on the, on the desktop. And, um, and of course, uh, this would be primarily, uh, uh, for assistants and admins, uh, to use. There, there's an example that Scott's pulled up on the, uh, uh, again, this is called a, a mini, a mini PC. So, um, that's basically all I have, it just, it'd just be nice to keep current and, uh, uh, to, you know, to replace the, the technology, uh, um, as you mentioned, Chris, we are, uh, running, generally, we're talking three to five years on most of this equipment, and, uh, we are starting to exceed that, uh, on, on the laptops. Thank you.
Yeah, no, that's great.
I say, I think this is, is great, the hardware, I also had a chance to take a look at it, I know you guys had, I don't know if you can share, if you had a good spreadsheet of what age each person's user's computer was, and which ones we wanted to target. There it is.
Thank you, yeah, okay.
That was really helpful for me to understand and, um, see that we, we'll get into the cycle of, of replacing hardware in, in, in town. Um, I hope that this becomes a yearly line item for the Technology Committee, uh, identifying, you know, five to 10K worth of computers that, that our employees are using, that we just periodically cycle out and get into that pattern.
Hmm. I can't believe that we have a Windows 7. Oh my goodness.
Thank God it's not being used though, but you can see the next one here, so some guy by the name of Art Lawrence, uh,
Yep.
Uh, I got a lot of chewing gum and baling wire on that one, but.
Yeah, I bet. A little duct tape too, huh?
Yeah, the other item I thought would be good to add to this, and I mentioned during the Technology Committee meeting, was the hard town cell phones. Any employee, uh, cell phones, getting the list of the age and models of those, so we can get into a reci, a, uh, cycle of upgrading those as well.
Yeah, I think we have to be clear on, on who actually has those, because I know there was some, some discussion at some point that, you know, department heads didn't want to have two cell phones, and, you know, that it was easier for them just to use their regular cell phone or, or whatever. Um, so it, it, you know, we probably need to craft a little bit of guidance or policy around it, in terms of use of official cell phones, if we're gonna do that. Um, because I don't think it's very clear right now, so. Good, all right, well, this sounds like a great, uh, great idea, and I know, I, just following up with Art, I think a lot of our, our, um, computers over time, because they were bought kind of here and there, and kind of haphazardly, quite frankly, I think, that they're, they're anything and everything, I mean, I'm, I'm amazed that these are kind of all somewhat similar, but I think it's because this was the first attempt under the CARES Act to try and get some level of standardization, but we had a hodgepodge of stuff before, so.
One thing I like about the standardization is we're getting all this through Novus, which is becoming our, our single point for all our IT needs in town. So they'll be the ones who do the installations of these machines and the support, so they'll be familiar with these, and, and getting them all to the same Lenovo, I think is the majority of them. So, a-again, alliance with what you're saying, Chris, just want to mention that. There's also a, a color printer they're adding to, which will be good, uh, because I don't think, you said there is no color printer right now in town, so.
Uh, not available, so.
Not available.
It'll make it a lot easier for, um, for budget season, so instead of doing 10% gray, 20% gray, and 30% gray in our charts, it'll be actual color.
There you go, yeah. Okay, now this sounds like a good, uh, good idea, and so basically, we, we had forgotten, I guess, that we had actually put some money aside uh, in capital last year for, uh, doing some ADA compliance with the doors, especially the bathroom doors, and so that is the 11,000 X dollars, if you want to pull that screen back up again, Scott, that we had, um, available from, from capital last time, so we will use that capital money and only the balance of whatever we need from ARPA, so I think what I need then is to have someone make a motion, uh, to reduce last week's ARPA approval of the ADA, uh, door changers, whatever we called them, uh, door openers, um, from ADA compliant, uh, at $12,500, there were four doors, uh, four doors, I think, Scott, right? Okay, to change the, uh, the request of $12,500 for the, uh, ADA compliant doors down to an amount of 1,068, let's have a first motion on that.
Yeah, so moved as stated by Chris.
Hopefully it's right. Okay, could I have a second? Select Board, Cindy, Stephen, anybody?
Uh, Cindy, seconds.
Okay, thanks. All right, uh, so let's do a roll call vote, all those in favor, please?
Palmer, yes.
LaValle, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Fouls, yes, okay, so that one is, will be our revised, uh, proposal for Judy on her tracking sheet. Okay, and then the next one will be a new proposal, and Judy gives these numbers, and she'll track these down. Uh, so then a new proposal, don't, don't, don't lose that, Scott, I need those figures. For somebody, anyway, to make the motion. Um, so we need a new, new proposal for the IT capital technology for $9,250.
So.
I move a new ARPA request.
Yep, go ahead, Stephen, somebody?
I move a new ARPA request for IT, um, equipment in the amount of $9,250.
Okay.
Second.
All right, second by Dan, okay, any further discussion on that? Is that pretty clear for everyone? Okay, all those in favor, roll call, please?
Palmer, yes.
LaValle, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Fouls, yes, okay, that one passes. And then the final motion, I guess, for the, uh, AED, uh, for the, uh, Senior Center. In the amount of 2182.
I move that, uh, an AED be purchased for the Senior Center for the amount of $2,182.
Okay.
Second.
And second by Dan, okay, any discussion on that? And so Scott, you're not asking, there's nothing being asked here now for the portable one, or all of those, or the park one, that's all gonna be dealt with in capital or somewhere else?
Uh, yeah, those are gonna get a little bit expensive.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, but even, even park to, to have one like this, that, that isn't gonna help solve their problem at the moment? Okay, all right. Okay, so we have one, one AED request for the COA Center, um, all those in favor, roll call, please?
Palmer, yes.
LaValle, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Okay, Fouls, yes, okay, great, all right, so that, uh, is one, one set of business done, so a bit of a revised, um, motion on the, on the equipment, uh, for the AED, uh, sorry, ADA doors, and then, um, two new proposals added on to that, so we'll get Judy to update her list, yeah, Dan?
I was hoping we could take another item out of order, uh, for the Technology Committee people who are here, so they don't have to wait all the way for, down to old business. So, we wanted to discuss the broadband committee charge with the Select Board. Um, so is it, I mean, it's up to you, but may, perhaps we could do that one sooner rather than later, so they're not waiting?
Sure, no, absolutely, understood, yep. Yep.
Okay, do you mind if I jump into it?
No, go for it, please.
Okay, great, so, um, you may remember a few meetings back, we had the subject of how, how was a town, we wanted to structure a committee that would continue to move the, the pursuit of broadband, fiber-based broadband for, for all our residents, uh, forward. We had the establishment and passing of the MLPs through two-town volts, and the question was, the Technology Committee itself wasn't really feeling that that was, felt that that was just too much scope, or too much for them to handle as, as a committee, they had enough going on, that that committee should be separate from the Technology Committee. And through the discussions with the Technology Committee and Scott, it was, it was determined that, and also the Select Board, it came off the, is, would this form as an MLP, would it form as a broadband committee? And we think the best recommendation, I'm speaking as, from the Technology, Ad-Hoc Technology Committee, um, would be to move this forward, is to have the Select Board form, uh, using the charter, or charge that Megan had sent over, a ad hoc broadband committee, which has the, has in its charge, um, determining what the best structure would be, getting together what, um, research needs to be done for the town to understand and form the way it should structure all of this, so rather than say, form an MLP now, or form a, uh, a broadband, a committee that's permanent, form an ad hoc broadband committee that has the focus of moving this forward into the right structure for the town for the next, whatever number of years, so.
So rather than going into an MLP committee itself, like another sort of interim step, is that what I'm understanding?
Yep, because we think that there is a, there is, um, a consultant, we want to, we want to involve in helping inform the town of the best way to structure this for us, so before we, so we want that, we want the ad hoc broadband committee to be present, to, to guide and work with that consultant to fit, to figure that out, we think that may be too much scope of work for the, for the Select Board to take on. Uh, out of all of this, it may come out, say, some towns have the MLP under the Select Board, or they have their own organization that, that, that handles this, but, um, having, having that committee work with the first part of their, their work will be, um, probably putting in a request to the Select Board for some funding, or getting a grant together for some funding to work with a consultant around determining the best way for Southampton to move forward with fiber to the home.
And this would be picking up from the work that the Tech Committee has already done in terms of meeting with a couple of the, uh, the providers in Westfield and the Hoyoke area, right? I mean, you've already had those interviews and have got some basics about what the whole program could look like, but I think that's the, you know, the big, the big question is, how do we make that decision? How do we know what's, what's the best deal, and, you know, is this really going to be a cost-effective thing for the town? I mean, the, the idea would be that the town actually manages this and has a bit of an income stream as well, but we're, we're the sole owners of it, basically, the way we had originally, um, talked about it, I think, when I was hearing some of the work from the Tech Committee, um, which is very different than the model from East Hampton now that they've chosen to go to, and I think even Northampton
Yes.
um, is not that kind of, you know, MLP model anymore, so, um, so what I'm gathering is you'd like somebody to kind of sort of look at the pros and cons of all of that, or?
Yeah, absolutely, I think it's, it's carrying this forward. We look at the Technology Committee, and like we said before, they have enough scope of, of other things they need to get done. Um, this broadband in itself is a, is a project. So it was the, it's the advice of the Technology Committee to, to the Select Board that this kind of, that, that topic gets spun off into, into, uh, broadband, ad hoc broadband committee, which will then advise the town uh, through the use of a consultant of the best structure, uh, for us to, to make this happen. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Megan, do you want to add anything to it? I'm kind of a, doing all the talking, so.
No, you're good, um, yeah, it was kind of just gonna become what we already are on the Tech Committee and Advisory Board, um, to be the ones to go to, to kind of have just a specialized committee to take on tasks.
And in, in doing that, remind me, Megan, had you identified some particular skills? I mean, I know it's, it's taken us a while, we've had, you know, a variety of members, you know, on and off on the Tech Committee, and, and as you've seen us trying to recruit members for many committees, um, were there particular skills that you wanted to have on this new committee, and?
Yeah, so, the one, um, let me just get it back up here. Um, so I was suggesting minimum of three people with technology experience and up to two without technology backgrounds, um, for a minimum of like five to seven people, um, like the Tech Committee is now, um, and I think having the two non-techno, technology savvy people, um, would be to the benefit of it, because then you could go back to the general public and say like, oh, this is, this is how I understand it, and then have the technical side kind of support it.
Mm-hmm.
I always thought it'd be great to have someone with a more business-minded, uh, philosophy on this committee, you know, we got a lot of smart, technically-minded people, but a lot of this is, is starting a business, you know, so understanding that part of things is important as well.
Yeah. Hmm, okay, well, I think, um, interesting idea, I don't know if, uh, Select Board members have any thoughts on that tonight? I, I don't know, without John here, I, I wouldn't want to take a vote on that tonight, but we'd certainly bring it back up in January and get it on the agenda and talk it through a little bit more, and just, you know, have, have Megan's, um, draft charge in front of us and, uh, kind of review that. Um, I'm gathering that none of the existing ad hoc members would be on that committee, from what I'm understanding, is that correct?
Um, so Kurt Nealon has offered to be part of it, at least as of right now, um, he has to check his, you know, the schedule, the commitment and everything, but he has offered to join it.
Okay, all right, good, Cindy, yeah?
Um, thanks for mentioning that, Megan, I'm glad there's somebody that's come forward, we know as a town, that sometimes it's been a challenge to find the qualified people we need to, to staff these committees. So I just, and I guess staff's not the word, um, to join the committees and be appointed. Um, do you, do you folks have a sense for how you'd go about and recruit? That, or what do you think? I mean, it sounds very good, I support the whole concept, um. Do you know of people that are eager to be a participant?
Yeah, have people reached out to you at all, or?
Not as of right now, personally, to me, um, I don't know if Kurt may have someone, seeing as he's already agreed to, I think, a meeting or two ago, um, we were talking about it, brought it, um, briefly to Select Board. So I don't know anyone personally yet.
Mm-hmm, okay. Well, we can always put out the call like we try to do, so hopefully Scott is coming back in, oh, there he is, good, his, his laptop froze. So there we go, guys, perfect timing, Scott. Uh, I, I know that, that, uh, that was totally intentional, right? We, we didn't ask for a show and tell tonight, but, uh, you're back. you're back. I take it, okay? You're you're on mute, but you're okay? Looks like you're there at least. Okay. All right. Oh.
We can't hear you.
Can't hear you at all, so. So you have still have to unmute yourself somehow. Maybe? Yep. Maybe it's your earbuds, Scott. Try them without it. But your your screen still shows you on mute, though.
Sorry about that.
There you go. We gotcha.
Yeah, my computer literally just died.
Okay.
Sorry.
That was good. No, I think I think we got the gist of it in terms of, you know, having a request to have the select board consider this other committee. What was the name of it, Dan? Municipal what?
Just an ad hoc committee, I believe, for broadband, municipal broadband committee.
Okay, all right. So what we said, Scott, was we'll probably just take it up on a as a formal agenda item on our next meeting or sometime, you know, early in January, whenever we meet again, and then have the charges that Megan had in front of us and understand better what that would look like and what kind of people we need to recruit and, you know, take a take a vote on that or finalize the charge at that point in time so we could move forward on it. Okay. So I think that's that's good. I think that gives us the the kick to keep on moving. I agree with you. We've we've gotten through the the hard part of two town votes, which approved it, but we need to kind of keep on moving. Otherwise, it's going, you know, things are going to pass us by all of a sudden while we're standing still, so. Okay, good. Anything else from the Tech Committee? Otherwise, we'll let you go back to your lives. But we really appreciate you joining in tonight and filling us in on things. So thanks, guys. Thanks, Art, Megan.
Hey, Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you.
Good. All right. So with that, let's continue on. So go back to the regular order here. So Scott, I think we're back still to your own Town Administrator Report, if you don't mind.
Yep. Uh, let me just get my phone here. Sorry. Um, so just a few things of note. Um, the first one was we attended a the Hampshire Regional Central Office Budget last week. I did put the presentation on the town's FY26 budget page, so that's available. It was a pretty comprehensive budget that was given by the superintendent and his staff. And there's there's still a lot of work to do. They're really untangling quite a bit of numbers over the last couple of years. But hopefully, you know, they're going to be able to give us a a real actual budget in the next couple of months. So there's a lot of positivity that's coming from it. We also started our cybersecurity and vulnerability this week between the EOTT EOTSS, the Executive Office of Technology and uh, I forget the other ones. And they're teaming up with Novus and a third party to test our network and see where there might be vulnerabilities, and this is going to allow us to obtain some future grants. We're thanks to Art and the Ad hoc Tech Committee, we're actually going to be putting in an $80,000 grant for tech support for January 6th, once the community compact applications open up. The other big highlight was we actually toured College Highway as well with PVPC and Dodson and Flinker. So we walked the whole perimeter and they're going to be quickly starting a new timeline for us that would kind of you know, help us to apply for some grants this year. And we're looking to start working on getting some focus groups ASAP and some of the stakeholders together. Preliminary budgets were due December 19th, so most people submitted everything.
Thank you, Scott. Let me just interrupt. I'm sorry I wasn't able to join that field trip. I was down and out. But I'm recovering. And I'm curious to hear more of the detail. We'll take that offline. But I do want to flag Public Safety Building Committee is going to meet like during hangover season, the first day of the month or some, you know, first day of the new year. And it would be really great if they can engage with this upcoming series of Public Safety Building Council on Aging, Housing Authority, Bing, 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 Dan? Concom even, because they're all stakeholders. And then we'll figure out how to fill in with with the rest. I mean, the Ag Committee and whomever.
Yep. Yeah, I think we can sort of second that. I think we'll hopefully work on the scheduling and whenever we've got, you know, regular meetings or or if there needs to be a special meeting with the planners that can that can be arranged. I think I don't know on the Public Safety one, they may be wanting to wait a little bit more until they hear more from the architects that were changing around some of the planning there, some of the footprint. So I'm not sure about that.
I get it. I get it. I I still think there could be a meaningful conversation about dividing up the road frontage.
Yep. So we'll see, you know, Scott can fill us in later on in terms of how how the meeting went and what they thought about, but sure, that sounds good. Okay, Scott, continue, please.
Uh, and we only got lost for four hours and only had to do one emergency evacuation. I'm just kidding. So budgets were due on the 19th and Bradley and I are going to be meeting with individual departments over the next couple of weeks just to go through them line by line. Go over all the requests and start putting something together. A little bit of a new process this year, so it's going to take a little bit more time. And then sorry about that. And I think that's that's it for right now.
Okay. Good. Um, and where did you say that you had posted the the Hampshire Regional first presentation? Is it on the town website or on the shared drive?
Um, it's on the town website under FY26 budget.
Okay, and that would be on the TA page or the accountant page or?
Oh, underneath government.
Under government, okay, perfect. Okay, very good. Okay, any questions for Scott about that? All right. Um, how about any reports from Select Board? Anybody have any last meetings since we met that they'd like to report on? Cindy, anything offhand?
I was gonna mention, oh, here we go. We we got from the Department of Revenue, the Bureau of Accounts, the tax rate for fiscal year 25, and that's for the Board of Assessors. And it is last fiscal year, current fiscal year, it's 1425 per thousand. But for next fiscal year, it's 1417 per thousand. So it's a few pennies less on a per thousand basis, but don't forget our land valuations, our property valuations have increased. And therefore taxes will not necessarily go down. So I'm just letting you know that it's not yet posted on our website, the Assessor's website, but I'm sure that'll happen pretty soon. So that's one point to make about the Board of Assessors. And otherwise, there isn't hasn't been any additional meetings from Board of from the Open Space Committee since the last report. And Board of Health, I was unable to attend their last meeting and I don't have any specific thing to report from Board of Health.
Okay, thank you. Dan, anything?
Yeah, excuse me. Uh, I think the two meetings or two committees that are pouring to report on are one, the Housing Authority. We had we had a joint meeting with the Conservation Commission. Me being on both, I checked with with our town council through Scott as well as the the State Ethics Committee to make sure there was no conflict of interest in me representing both at the same time. And and there wasn't because I'm at the end, I have no stake in the matter and I I'm serving the town at a volunteer capacity. But the the question on at the table for those meetings was 318 College Highway. And there happened to be the previous owner had had dumped some some yard, I say yard waste fertilizer, whatever you want to call that, into a pile which had formed something along the lines of some a a small pile that had to be dealt with. So the the Housing Authority guy has permission from the Conservation Commission now to to treat that as a manmade obstacle and to move forward. So that should help to alleviate that issue they were having on their property. So you can continue on.
This is the property across from the golf course, right?
Yep, yep. The one, the the dream there is to get it to work, get to work with Habitat for Humanity to to build a single, maybe double house, something on that lot to help out some family in town. And then the other thing is Conservation Commission, you all may know, but maybe not. The the chair had had to step away for personal reasons. So they had their their last meeting. No one has stepped up as the new chair. In the meantime, the committee members have offered to do a rotating chair. So people will take turns for a month or so or being playing that role until we can find someone who's who has the time and capability to to fill that role. So that's that.
Thank you. Yep, okay. All right. Stephen?
No, I have nothing. We meet quite frequently.
Okay. All right. Very good. Two things, I guess, from my end then. One, just tying in a little bit to Planning Board, this went around on on an email. Many of you were informed of the Westfield, impending Westfield Project Public Hearing that had happened for the proposed battery storage system in Westfield that would have been located basically on the Aquifer in effect, not only West Hampton but Southampton. We did not get any kind of a notice, to my knowledge, either the Planning Board or the Select Board. And certainly never got it in time to attend the hearing. But the Planning Board and Select Board did do a joint letter with comments and questions about it. And that has been submitted and it is also posted on our town website. It's on the homepage under News. If you scroll all the way down, it's also on the Planning Board page and the Select Board page. So if anybody's asking about it, I know there's been a few pieces of information out on Facebook wondering and I know I tried to chime in at one point saying that, yes, we we had replied. But if anybody wants to look at it, it's there. The other thing that's happened, I spent a long time last week on grants. So the Grant Committee and especially Fire Chief Fasoli and myself spent time working on the two Assistance to Firefighters grants. And we were able to submit at least the two applications again. Last year, if you recall, we had put in for a 2,000 gallon tanker truck. And that we put in for again this year. Prices have, of course, gone up. But basically, I think our our request is somewhere around $730,000 of the federal government. We have to put in a $35,000 share. We have about a 5% match of the total. The total, the total value ours and theirs together would be around 752, I believe, thousand. And then we put in also another grant application for replacing 22 of the SCBA air pack harnesses. These are the self controlled breathing apparatus. And that was around close to $169,000 and that would be only about an $8,000 match. So should we be, you know, lucky and get any grants, our match is really very minuscule compared to what FEMA would would put forward. So we got them in by the deadline and now we sit and wait. And hopefully this time we will make it through the computer round and get to a real person to actually read them. We reached out and we've got support letters from Congressman Neal's office, Senator Warren and Senator Markey's office. So that's about the best we can do. And hopefully we will, I don't know, make it through at least the beginnings here and get into another round and you know, with a little luck, well, we won't know anything until probably about June, but and just to say that those requests have gone in and so special thanks to the Grant Committee and Chief Fasoli in particular for working several long days to get these in. So that's where that is. And that's about it, I think, on my end. Other meetings have happened, but there we'll just go through the minutes and take a look at those at any other given time from Senior Center Building to Public Safety Building to Master Plan actually had their quarter quarterly meeting as well. So we we've been catching up on meetings and minutes are available or will be posted shortly. Okay, let's keep on moving. Scott, you want to come back in and talk to us a little bit about the classification plan, I guess? We've we've gone through the ARPA applications already, so we'll jump down to classification plan.
Still finalizing everything, so next meeting I should have a spreadsheet for the Select Board to adopt on the placement of each employee in the in the range.
Very good. Okay. And so far, you've you've passed that around to the employees and that seems to be being accepted and understood?
For the most part, I was able to sit down with each department head individually and go over everything.
Very good. Okay. Good. Okay. All right. Well, probably the other next agenda item is the 250th Anniversary Info. Some of you have been probably bombarded by two or three different emails. Sorry for that, but you're on too many mailing lists. We are kicking this off, folks, and I think we're trying to get the word out as best we can, but New Year's Day is the kickoff for the town's 250th Anniversary Celebration. Has mentioned been mentioned before, we're going to try to do some event every month throughout the year, hopefully some, you know, keynote anchor kind of event and then maybe some smaller events during the month. And we're starting off with two inaugural events on New Year's Day. So let me turn over to Cindy for a minute if she wants to just announce the first event.
Okay, for all those early risers on January 1 who are hikers, and it is important that you recognize this is a hike, not just a walk. We are going to go to the summit of Mount Palmeroy, which is in Southampton, by the way. We are accessing it from West Hampton, however. That's how we go in. This is limited to 30 people and the way to sign up is to email me or text me directly. And I think probably the best thing is to go through cpalmer@townofsouthampton.org. That's the easiest way to remember. We've already got 15 people signed up, so we've only got room for about 15 more. Preference goes to Southampton residents. I've had a few people request whether, you know, their family member who might live in another community could join it, and I've said yes for the time being because I really want Southampton people to do this. And it's going to be approximately a two and a half mile hike. And there will be about a two or 300 foot elevation change. Holes are requests are really required, I think, if you could possibly get them. Good footwear, certainly the right clothing for January 1st. And then from there, we are going to do to then go to the next event, which Chris will mention.
All right, very good. Thanks.
Your meeting at 9:00 AM in Town Hall Parking Lot.
Very good. No, that's that's great. I'm glad you've got some people that are interested in wanting to sign up and that's that's fantastic. Very good. So hopefully you'll be back from your hike in time. We're asking people, and this is for the broader community, so not not limited at all. So anybody and everybody and families and kids come on down to the church, the Congregational Church at about 11:45. We're going to start gathering at about 11:45. Hopefully, we can be standing on the front lawn. If not, people can be sitting in their cars if it's too cold or windy. But we are going to start off by ringing the church bells 250 times. And that will be preceded, though, first of all, with a an acknowledgement of our Native American origins of town, sort of a land acknowledgement statement will happen, and then the ringing of the bells. And I've been told they will not take more than around 15 or 20 minutes at the most. And then everyone is invited in for just some soup and artisan bread and some cider coffee. So just come on in and warm up and we've got some homemade soups and some breads. And so everyone is invited and just come on in for an hour and take a break between whatever you're doing in the morning and getting ready for the football games in the afternoon. So I hope we can have a good crowd, spread the word. We've tried to get it out. We've contacted the Gazette. It's up on our bulletin board at the Mother's Club. It's in a couple of newsletters. It's on our Facebook page. It's on on the town website. So however else you know to get it out, feel feel free to share it yourselves, okay? So hope to see people there. That will be great. All right, next up. Who's got the agenda handy in front of them now that I closed it down with what I was doing here? Help me up here.
Uh, next to any other necessary business.
Is there anything that's I don't know of anything offhand. We'll have an agenda for the 7th. We're going to be meeting again on let's see, January 7th will be our first first meeting of the year. So I think that's it. I don't know that there's anything urgent between now and then. We will be open only a half day tomorrow. day tomorrow. And obviously closed on on Christmas Day. And I know some people are probably taking a a little bit longer week. But anyway, that's that's the official closing. So for those who may not be hanging around, just wishing everybody a Merry Christmas and hopefully a enjoyable, not too cold holiday week. It was certainly windy enough in the last day or two and very cold, but maybe we can hopefully not have too many more days like that right during the the Christmas and Hanukkah holidays. So thank you for everyone. With that, let's go into, I think, licenses and permits. We've got a couple of other common victual or license renewals that had not come into us at the last meeting. I believe there are four altogether. There was three on our agenda, and there's one that came in late. So if someone would mind just reading those and making a motion to approve the the request for the Common Vic licenses?
I'm looking.
Yep.
All right. I move to accept the Common Victual license for License Year 2025 for Good Eats to Go.
Okay, let's just do them all together as a group, I think. It's fine. You got it?
The next one is KM Operations, Doing Business as Subway.
Okay.
And the next one, I hope I'm not missing one, is Walgreens Eastern Company, Doing Business as Walgreens Number 17885. And then, I'm sorry, can somebody else find the other one that just came in? Because that's a different.
Stop and save.
Thank you. So there's four.
Right. Right. So these would be license license renewals for the Common Vic. So stop and save, Good Eats to Go, Walgreens, and
Subway.
Subway, all right. Okay, so that's a motion. Can we have a second? Stephen, I think I heard a second?
You do.
Okay. Okay, any, any? All right. Could we have a roll call vote then? All those in favor of all four of those?
Levalle, aye.
Palmer, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Falls, aye. Okay, those four are approved. Very good. I think that's all. I don't know that we have any more that I'm aware of, anyway. Okay, next up, I think we have some minutes from November to take a look at. Let me just pull it up here a second. Hold on. Too many things here. There were just a couple of typos, I think, that just need some small correction. Nothing, nothing major.
Those before or after the warrants? I'm not finding them.
Just trying to scroll down here for a minute. I think. Hold on a second. They're right after the Common Vic licenses. So it's November 26 minutes.
I see them, yeah.
Yeah. And there were just a couple of things that I think just need a little tiny typos. I think the the person for the Cultural Council, if I'm not mistaken, is Deanna McFadzen, not Dean. McFadzen, I think there's an A on that. We can check that with Lucy just to be sure. And then I had a question, Cindy, if you, I don't know if you've seen it there. It was a question on the, what you had reported on the Board of Assessors. What what's listed in the notes here is Hoyok Waterwork Taxes. And then it says engaged a title examiner, Barbara Webb to review. Is that? That doesn't look like that's totally accurate to me. Is Barbara Webb the tax examiner? No.
She's the title examiner, and that's what it said.
Title examiner, okay.
She is a title examiner.
Okay, she is one. Okay, she is the title examiner. Okay, then that is correct, then.
I believe it is, yes. I'm looking at it.
Okay, fine. I misread that. Okay, fine. And I don't know, was there anything else? Let's see. I think that was basically basically it. I can't think of if there's anything else that was very tiny, probably a typo at the most. So if anybody has any other comments on it, if not, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of November 26.
I move to approve the minutes of November 26 with the one spelling correction.
Okay, there might be two. I just couldn't find it right offhand with any spelling corrections. Okay, that's fine. Okay, could I have a second?
Second.
Dan, second. Okay, all those in favor, roll call, please.
Palmer, yes.
Levalle, yes.
Johnson, aye.
Falls, yes. Okay, minutes are approved. All right. And then next, we come down to our favorite time of the meeting, our warrant reading.
Dramatic reading. Yes, okay. We, I have signed or endorsed five warrants apparently since our last meeting. And I will do the usual recitation if I can get it big enough. PD 25-20A in the amount of $236,303.46. Next is W 25-21, the amount is $315,901.71. P 25-22 is in the amount of $356,311.73. PD-22 is in the amount of $60,013.50. Finally, W 25-23 is in the amount of $211,770.30.
Very good.
Spare the applause.
All right. Thanks for that. It's almost harder to say the the figures than it is to look at them, right?
Truly, truly.
All right. How about any old business, Scott? Just want to run through a couple of things. I I know we just talked about the Broadband Committee charge, but anything else on a couple of those other items under the old business?
Still trying to do a Hail Mary on the Manan Bridge for this year's grant to the the money that we have so far and the green energy. So they should be starting the control system at Norris School today. I wasn't able to run over there yet. I'm gonna try to stop by maybe tomorrow, make sure they're doing it. But that's gonna affect the controls in the library and the main office. So that's the, I think it's around $80,000 to $90,000 grant for the green energy.
Great, okay. And how are we coming with the 23 audit? Have we got questions we've got to answer or?
A few left. Bradley was mostly working on the tax recap over the last week, week and a half. But now that he's, now that we're done with that, we're gonna go back on track for the the revenues and then hopefully close up the FY23 audit ASAP.
Great. So we should be pretty much, we're getting quite caught up on revenue and expense reports from what I've heard?
Yes, Bradley's just a little bit behind schedule. He plans on catching up this week. So ultimately, we're still gonna be done for January.
Great, okay. Very good, okay. And then we'll still have to be working out about our Capital Committee and how we're gonna look at capital requests this year.
Yeah, I think that'll be part of the budget process. I think that'll help.
Okay, okay, very good. Okay, well, we have our next Select Board meetings on January 7th and January 21st. And that's basically all we have to announce. So with that, just want to wish everyone a very, very happy holiday season, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah, however you choose to celebrate, and do stay warm. And try to come out on January 1st. We'd love to have you come out and celebrate and see if we can kick off the year's events and, you know, make it a special, special time in Southampton. So thanks, everyone.
May there be peace on earth.
That too, indeed. All right. Thank you, everyone. Can I take a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Falls, aye. Okay, we are adjourned at 7:01. Thank you very much. Take care now. Bye bye.